I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for December 9th, 2024. This will be our last meeting of 2024. It's already been a busy evening as we had our work session earlier, and I'm sure we're all looking forward to the holiday, a break and the opportunity to spend time with family and friends. We hope that everyone has a wonderful and restful holiday season. Thank you for being here this evening, and I'd now like to share our YCSD mission statement. The mission of the York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future. Please join me if you will in a moment of silence. Now I will share some information about our pledge leader, Harbor Sanderson, a fifth grader at Yorktown Elementary School. It is my pleasure to introduce Harbor Sanderson, tonight's pledge leader from Yorktown Elementary School. Harbor is a creative and thoughtful student who brings her unique energy and enthusiasm to everything she does. She enjoys crafting, especially crocheting, and loves the thrill of skateboarding in her free time. At home, Harbor's a great help with her siblings, and she cherishes family time playing board games together. Harbor is an active member of the STEM Club. She has big dreams of helping others by creating innovative strategies, or excuse me, innovative storage solutions that are both affordable and practical. Her goal is to support people who might feel overwhelmed by their belongings, an idea that shows her compassion and forward-thinking approach. In the classroom, Harbor's kindness shines through. She's always ready to lend a helping hand to her peers, creating a welcoming and supportive environment. As a military-connected student, Harbor brings the resilience and strength that comes with being part of a Navy family. With her dad currently deployed, Harbor eagerly looks forward to his return this spring. Please join me in welcoming Harbor Sanderson as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now recognize our Seniors of the Month for each school. When your name is announced, please stand along with your family members as we hear about your accomplishments. Our first Senior of the Month will be from Bruton High School, and Mr. Schaefer will tell us about him.
Yes. Sebastian Preschelak, go ahead and stand up, and all your family, go ahead and have them all stand, yeah, yeah. Aunts and uncles too, and brothers and all that stuff, yeah. I told them I was gonna do this to them. Sebastian's unique upbringing as a son of a diplomat has exposed him to diverse cultures and environments across four continents, making him adaptable and resilient in the face of change. His involvement in the Boy Scouts is a testimony to his commitment to service. Whether it's preparing meals for the homeless or building trails, he finds joy in knowing his efforts benefit others. This altruistic spirit extends to his work with food drives organized by his church, driven by a desire to help families in need. Beyond his humanitarian efforts, Sebastian's entrepreneurial spirit shines through his ownership of a lawn care business and his venture into an online business. His leadership extends to extracurricular activities as well, where he served as co-captain and later captain of the esports team and participated in the chess and computer science clubs. Sebastian's sociable nature allows him to connect with people across various backgrounds, fostering an inclusive environment wherever he goes. His ability to embrace diverse perspectives enriches his worldview and encourages those around him to do the same. Congratulations, Sebastian.
All right, next we will hear from Mr. Pyavich about one of our Grafton students.
Yes, I would like to invite Jude Yambu and his family to please stand up. Thank you. Jude Yambu is a natural leader and model student at Grafton High School. Academically, he has excelled in rigorous advanced and college-level courses, showing exceptional motivation and pride in his achievements. As Vice President of the National Honor Society and MAT Honor Society, Jude demonstrates his ability to balance academic excellence with meaningful extracurricular involvement. Jude's leadership goes beyond academics. He has been key club treasurer since 10th grade, contributing to community service projects and co-president of the Clippers crazies, fostering school spirit. He also represents Grafton on the Blue Crab Bowl, Marine Science Team, and has competed in track and field since freshman year, excelling in both intellectual and athletic endeavors. In addition to school, Jude volunteers at the Victory YMCA, serving as YMCA Leadership Club President since 9th grade. His four years of service have instilled a deep sense of purpose and responsibility. Jude's commitment to academics, leadership, and service makes him an exceptional student and a deserving recipient of Grafton High School's Senior of the Month Award. Congratulations, Jude. Thank you.
We also have another Grafton Senior of the Month who was not able to be here last month, and we're going to recognize her this month, and Ms. Ferman will tell us about her.
Yes, if Kelsey Hurst and her family would please stand, and I apologize for my voice, it's going in and out, it's still recovering. Grafton High School is proud to announce Kelsey Hurst is our Senior of the Month. Kelsey is a dedicated student, athlete, and community volunteer who has made a lasting impact at Grafton. She has been a key player on the field hockey, soccer, and track teams since her freshman year, earning recognition at regional and state levels and breaking two Grafton records in indoor track. Kelsey's leadership shines through her roles as track MVP both indoor and outdoor, and field hockey team captain. Her teamwork, communication, and dedication inspire her peers. Beyond athletics, Kelsey is an active member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, where she develops her leadership and public speaking skills. Kelsey is also committed to giving back to her community through school and local volunteer work. Her dedication, work ethic, and role as a positive influence on others make her a deserving recipient of Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Kelsey.
And now, Mr. Richardson will tell us about our TAB High School Senior of the Month.
Yeah, TAB High School Senior of the Month is Landon Howard. If he'd stand with everybody he brought with him, stand up too, please, you're supporting people there, perfect. So TAB High School is pleased to announce Landon Howard as our Senior of the Month for December. Landon is the definition of determination, leadership, and heart, and his story at TAB High School is one to be remembered. Landon came to TAB his freshman year as a 90-pound hopeful football player who has transformed in what Coach Aiden Byron describes as "the heart and soul of the team." Landon, now captain in 165 pounds, is not only a talented player, but a guiding force. His passion, kindness, and work ethic set the tone on and off the field. He has mastered the art of perseverance despite setbacks and obstacles, all while encouraging and inspiring those around him. Whether he's rallying up the team during one of his mid-game speeches or simply saying hi in the hallway, Landon has a way of making others feel welcomed and valued. Outside of football, Landon's courage and grit has resulted in academic success and a spot on New Horizons Fire Science Program, where he is preparing for a future career as a firefighter. Additionally, Landon spends his spare time working at York County's Parks and Recreation serving our community. This winter, Landon will also perform in TAB's upcoming winter play. Finally, he was just memed to the All-Region First Team.
And now I have the honor of telling you about York High School Senior of the Month, Michael Harith. Would you and your family please stand? York High School is pleased to recognize Michael Harith as our Senior of the Month for his numerous contributions and achievements. Michael is a dedicated student at New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology, and he has served as guardian of the James River through the James River Leadership Expedition, demonstrating his commitment to environmental stewardship. He is a proud member of the National Honor Society, as well as the Math, Science, and Spanish Honor Societies, showcasing his academic excellence. His leadership skills shine as he created and led an elementary school garden restoration project, making a positive impact on younger students and the environment. Michael served as graduation marshal at YHS, demonstrating resilience as he participated on crutches due to a leg injury. His inventive spirit earned him a top placement in the Broadcom Master Sci Fair and second place in the Regional Science Fair for his brilliant Fog Harp Project. With a bright future ahead, Michael Harith exemplifies hard work, perseverance, and leadership, making him a role model for peers and the community alike. We are proud to honor him as Senior of the Month and can't wait to see all the great things that he will achieve in the future. All right, Dr. Shandor, would you like to go down front for the next set of recognitions? So we will be combining our award recipients according to their school, so I will ask Dr. Kristin Bollum, Yorktown Elementary Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared about both the Student Service Award recipient and the Volunteer of the Month for Yorktown Elementary. First, we have our Student Service Award recipient, Sage Henderson. I am pleased to tell you about Sage as he comes up front. This year's Yorktown Elementary Student Service Award recipient is Sage Henderson. Sage is the model student who positively influences those around her every day. She exemplifies respect, responsibility, and kindness, always ready to lend a hand whenever needed. Whether it's stepping in to clean up without being asked or modeling positive behavior, Sage demonstrates an admirable willingness to serve and lead by example. Sage's impact extends beyond the classroom. A dedicated member of the YES Falcon Corps since 3rd grade, she now mentors younger Corps members. This April, she will proudly represent our school as a member of the All-Virginia Elementary Corps, a remarkable achievement. Sage supports her classmates, offering help when needed and fostering collaboration during group activities to ensure everyone feels included. Her positive energy motivates those around her, and her proactive approach, whether assisting her teacher or embracing challenges to enhance her learning, sets her apart. Sage's dedication, kindness, and initiative make her an inspiration and a truly deserving recipient of the Student Service Award. Now we have our Volunteer of the Month for Yorktown Elementary, Ms. Madeline Barley. Ms. Madeline Barley, can you please join Dr. Shandor and Dr. Bollum up front? It's an honor to recognize Madeline Barley as Yorktown Elementary's Volunteer of the Month, of the Year, excuse me. Madeline exemplifies a true servant's heart, dedicating her time, energy, and resources to bettering our school and community. Over the past three years, she has single-handedly chaired our beloved Halloween Dance, organized teacher appreciation events, and coordinated parent shifts during SOWs to ensure our teachers had well-deserved breaks. Her commitment extends to our students as she secured donations of healthy snacks for all students during state testing, clothing, supplies, and even a piano for our music program. Madeline and her husband's generous contribution of funds and materials brought us a brand-new Gaga ball pit, creating joy for our students during recess for years to come. Despite her busy schedule, Madeline has served on the PTA Nominating Committee, coordinated activities for our Spring Carnival, and consistently gone above and beyond to enrich the experiences of every Falcon family. Madeline's kindness, selflessness, and passion for serving others inspire us all. We are truly grateful to have her as part of our Yorktown family. Thank you, Madeline, for your unwavering dedication. You are a gift to your Falcon family. Okay, now I will ask Dr. Shannon Butler, York High School Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared for both the Student Service Award recipient and the Volunteer of the Month for York High School. Okay, Mr. Richardson?
Yep, thank you. If Riley Jones could step forward and come up front. York High School would like to recognize Riley Jones as our Student Service Award recipient. Riley is a remarkable high school senior who has dedicated over 300 hours to making a difference in her community. As a member of the YHS Student Council, she helped plan and organize school events and is always ready to lend a hand and encourage her classmates. Furthermore, her volunteer work includes contributions to York High School Youth Volunteer Corps, where she participated in the organization of local projects and improved our school's involvement in community outreach. At Hampton Baptist Church, she has been a reliable volunteer assisting in the So All May Eat Program, which provides nutritional assistance to families in need. Most notably, her summers are spent as a camp counselor with Jamestown 4-H, where she inspires and mentors younger campers by leading activities and promoting teamwork and friendship. Her dedication to 4-H has made a significant impact, helping campers learn and grow during their time at camp. Through her service, Riley Jones has not only given her time, but also developed leadership, empathy, and strong sense of responsibility. She truly embodies the spirit of volunteerism and community service. Congratulations, Riley.
Okay, we will now have the Volunteer of the Month.
Okay, so next, Sarah Browning, if you would come forward. York High School is proud to recognize Sarah Browning as its Volunteer of the Year. Sarah has been a steady presence at York High School for the past six years, as her youngest of three daughters graduates this June. This recognition is special because we are not just recognizing her work this year, but her abundance of work over the past several years, beginning in 2018. Sarah has been a vital contributor to the Athletic Booster Club, serving as president for the last three years. She has also willingly served on numerous committees for both the York County School Division and York High School. As a leader of the Athletic Booster Club, Sarah has dedicated countless hours to various activities that have significantly benefited our school and community. She has been instrumental in raising funds to support our athletic teams, ensuring that they have resources they need to succeed. Her efforts include organizing and managing concession sales, where she not only buys and stocks the necessary items, but also coordinates volunteers to help run the stands during events. Sarah's creativity shines through her design of spirit wear, which she has helped foster school spirit and pride among students and supporters alike. In addition to her fundraising and organizational skills, Sarah has been proactive in reaching out to local businesses and sponsors, securing additional support for our athletic programs. Her enthusiasm and dedication are evident as she cheers on our athletes at virtually every home game. Working tirelessly in this concession or spirit wear table, Sarah's ability to rally the community and her unwavering support to our students have made her an invaluable asset to York High School. Congratulations, Sarah.
We now have a presentation by the York Foundation for Public Education, and Mr. Schaefer will tell you about that.
Okay. I'd like to invite Mr. Jimmy Ruth, York Foundation for Public Education member, to step forward and assist Dr. Shandor as he presents gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Harbor Sanderson, a fifth grader from Yorktown Elementary School, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients, Sage Henderson from Yorktown Elementary School, and Riley Jones from York High School. We also congratulate our Seniors of the Month, Sebastian Preschelak from Bruton High School, Jude Yambu from Grafton High School, as well as Grafton's November Senior of the Month, Landon Howard from TAB High School, and Michael Harith from York High School. A special gift from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet is being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jean Fioke of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. Join me in congratulating all our award recipients.
the Virginia Distinguished Purple Star School Award. Ms. Cheryl Parr, Associate Director of Student Services, will now come forward to make this presentation.
We are honored to recognize the efforts of several York County School Division schools for receiving the 2024-25 Purple Star Award. This is from the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Students. The Purple Star Award is a three-year designation, which recognizes students, educators, and administrators for their work to create a supportive learning environment and to remove barriers to the academic success for children of military families. This award is being presented to numerous schools in Virginia, and we're very excited that five YCSD schools have been selected. The Purple Star designation is especially meaningful to YCSD as we continue to have the most military-connected students in the state of Virginia. This is either the second or third time that these five schools have achieved this honor, and this evening they join all other YCSD schools who carry this designation already. With this recognition, YCSD is now one of three Purple Star School Divisions in the state, which means every school in our school division has achieved Purple Star status, something to be proud of. Receiving the award for the third time, we have, from Coventry Elementary, Principal Lisa Gilamo and Counselor Allison Vadekas, and they will come forward now. Next, we have from Grafton Bethel Elementary School, Assistant Principal Lindsay Kurtz and Counselor Kristin Wicker. From TAB Middle School, we have Principal Amore Michael and Counselor Carrie Dukes. Receiving this award for the second time is, from McGruder Elementary, Principal Lisa Rufier and Counselor Carrie Sanchez. And also, from Bruton High School, Principal Erin McQuillan and Counselor Sharna Moss-Gregory. At this time, I would also like to ask Jamie O'Connor, one of our military school liaisons from the Yorktown Naval Weapons Station, to join us at the front. Jamie, along with her liaison colleagues from Joint Base Langley-Eustis, who could not be here with us this evening, continually partners with YCSD concerning military matters. We appreciate the efforts of Jamie and our other liaisons, and also thank our military families, of course, for their continued service. Congratulations to these schools and to all YCSD staff who greatly support our military students and families. Thank you, team.
I will now ask Ms. Courtney Gonzalez Vega, STEM Science Specialist, to the podium to introduce our next two awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting two competitive grant awards the School Division recently received. The awards will start with the Advancing Computer Science Education Grant by inviting Dr. Shandor and Dr. Skinner to accept the award. The Virginia Department of Education Advancing Computer Science Education Grant is a competitive funding opportunity designed to support the integration of computer science with the new 2024 Virginia Computer Science Standards of Learning. Their division has been awarded $74,599 to enhance computer science instruction at the elementary and middle school levels. This grant will facilitate the realignment of current kindergarten through 8th grade computer science lessons to meet the 2024 standards. Additionally, it will support the development of new elementary computer science resource lessons and instructional materials, aimed at enhancing hands-on learning experiences in computer science at the elementary level. The second competitive grant is the School Security Equipment Grant. I would like to invite Dr. Carroll to join Dr. Shandor in accepting this award. Also, Mr. McQuillan, if you can come to the stage. The 2024-25 School Security Equipment Grant from the Virginia Department of Education is authorized under the Public School Security Equipment Grant Act of 2013. These school grants were competitively awarded based on the criteria developed by the Virginia Department of Education in collaboration with the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. At this time, I'm happy to announce that Bruton High School is receiving $160,000 for school security equipment. Congratulations to Dr. Carroll and his team, and Bruton High School. This concludes my award presentation. Thank you.
All right, next we have a presentation of two awards to Mr. Bill Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Heather McElliot, Payroll Supervisor, Ms. Allison Brandon, Budget and Financial Supervisor, and Ms. Margaret Kirk, Accounting and Finance Manager. Could they please come to the front? Mr. Pyavich, will you tell us about the award?
It's presented to York County School Division Fiscal Year 23. It was awarded to Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Association of School Business Officials International and Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Government Finance Office Association of the United States and Canada. To meet the standards for the ACFR Award, the ACFR must be efficiently organized and satisfy generally accepted accounting principles and applicable legal requirements. The ACFR Award are the highest form of recognition awarded in the field of government financial reporting. This is the 26th consecutive year that School Division has earned this award. Congratulations.
All right. At this time, the board's gonna take a short recess to meet with all the award recipients and
At this time, the board's going to take a short recess to meet with all the award recipients and their families. All right, we will now re-convene the meeting. Dr. Shandor, did you have something you wanted to add?
I did. Thank you very much, Ms. Goodwin, board members. So, we have one minor language change in policy JFCF to clarify which bell begins the new bell-to-bell cellphone policy. It's basically going to involve about four words. So, this change will provide clarity to students, parents, and staff members. So, if we could, if the board could consider adding that to the agenda.
Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we add, or amend the agenda, actually, to add policy JFCF to Section 16, so we can have some discussion on this when it comes up.
Second?
I will second.
Okay. A motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to amend the agenda to include JFCF into Section 16. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero. We're going to go to unfinished business. We have three topics for discussion under unfinished business this evening. The topics were tabled at the November 25th regular board meeting. The first one is regarding the Freedom of Information Act, and Dr. Shandor, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, I had just one comment. So, the division received a FOIA request which included a request for communications to and from board members, and our division regulations state that the Public Relations and Communications Officer has been designated as the division's FOIA officer and will coordinate responses to FOIA requests. The division's practice is for the FOIA officer to request email records from our information technology department and coordinate a time to review records on YCSD, as well as personal devices, with each individual noted in a FOIA. In June, we had four members, four board members complied with these practices while one refused to do so, instead chose to review their own records to determine which, if any, were responsive. This is violating the FOIA officer's process for records identification and review. So, as superintendent, I just want some clarification. I'd like the board to let me know if this is an acceptable practice for staff and for you as a school board.
I think I can make the first comment. We need to follow the law, and I think when it's not followed, it needs to be brought up so the public knows. And I think in this case, it's being brought up, the public knows that we had a board member that didn't participate. I participate whenever I get a phone call from you or the FOIA officer to bring my phone in, or even Ms. Berry, that I bring my phone in, and they look at it and see if there's anything they need to download or take a picture of, or whatever. And we require employees to follow this. And I think it's, there's a problem if we have our employees following this and we as board members are not. So, that's my position.
I would like to defer to Ms. Berry and get your input, excuse me, on this.
The FOIA law doesn't address the how the division would collect it, however, it leaves it to individual divisions on how to collect it. And as this practice has been a longstanding practice with the division, it's the division's practice. And I will note that the board norms and protocols does require board members to adhere to the division practice in FOIA.
So, I think my take on that would be, so you're saying, under our policy, basically. So, again, I go back to, if we have policy, I mean, what good is having a policy if you don't follow policy? If you don't want to follow that policy, then the policy should be amended and voted on, that we're not going to do that, but it hasn't. So, therefore, logically, it would seem like we would need to follow the policy. That's how I interpret it, until such time as we decide as a board that we want to do something different with the policy. So, that's kind of where I rest on that.
Okay. Is there any legal or consequences to not following the FOIA law? I mean, is it the states, or federal, or what is it, Ms. Berry?
The requester could file with the courts for violation of FOIA. That's always an option. So, it could place the board in jeopardy liability.
And do we have any consequences that we could impose on, as a board?
Under the norms and protocols, you do have consequences for violations of different norms and protocols. You have, I believe it's in the Board Docs Library, the last one that was approved this past August, and there is a list of different violations.
So, my take on a FOIA, any that I think we do need to obey and follow the FOIA rules because it's part of the job that we sign up for. I don't know what the policy, do we have exact policy with the language on there stating what exactly is expected to be done? Do we know, I don't know the name of the policy.
Our policy puts the information officer in charge of it.
Okay.
And then the practice has been that we do certain things, and the practice is that if there's a request for text messages, the only way to get a text message is to see the phone, and so the phones are brought in, and the information officer sits with the board member or the staff member, and they review it together.
The other thing I will say, and this is just from a leadership perspective, I never asked people to do something that I wasn't willing to do myself. So, if I'm going to ask, you know, if I'm leading and I'm asking my staff, or whoever, to, hey, you have to do this, then I, as a leader, need to do that as well. And that's where I go back to, if we as a board aren't adhering to a policy that, you know, is on our policy guidelines, then we're not setting the example for everybody else who has to adhere to that as well. And then I go back to saying, with that said, if, you know, if it's not acceptable, if there's something wrong, then we discuss as a board that we need to alter or change it.
I think also, in the spirit of transparency, that we should follow it, because if someone doesn't, then it automatically casts doubt on the whole board.
As I understand the use of it, and I did go through everything and checked to make sure, you know, if something fell underneath it and nothing was, you know, I turned in what I had and checked my personal phone. From my understanding, with elected officials, they are under, basically, the guideline that they are to check their personal items and turn it in. And I had requested the name of the person who had filed the FOIA, and so I was waiting for that, you know, to see the actual FOIA request, rather than just a three-by-five card that just had words written down on it, that I wanted to see the official FOIA. And that was just a simple request. And then, once I saw that, I turned in what was requested.
As I understand, the elected officials are responsible for abiding by the policies and regulations and practices of whatever body they serve, and in this case, it would be the practices that Ms. Goff has established. So, each search is individualized. There are certain search terms that need to be looked for according to the request, and Ms. Goff is best suited to do that kind of search, to maintain equality between all searches of all phones, to make sure everything's done the same for everyone.
So, I guess at this time, I guess as a board, we need to, I mean, we have the policy in writing as it is, you know, and I'm hearing, most of us feel like, is there anybody that does not feel like we should be doing that, we should not be adhering to the policy that we have written and that we adopted?
What is the policy number? Or letter, you know, the?
KBA.
But my only request would be that, as Ms. Fairman stated, that elected officials can look at their own phones and make those decisions for what they turn in and what they don't. My question would be, if that's going to be the expectation for board members, you know, if I have a principal that's FOIA'd, am I going to, or an athletic coach or an athletic director, am I going to tell them to review their phone on their own first as well before they contact the FOIA officer?
I think it has to be consistent. I don't think that we can have one rule for us and one rule for other people. I mean, I think we all have to have the same standard. I'm not comfortable with having a rule for the board to be able to review and bring in, and then saying everybody else has to do it the way we have our policy written. I just don't, that doesn't sit well with me.
Well, it's not a good way to build trust in the community either.
You know, if we don't like it, I mean, if it's not an acceptable practice, then that policy needs to be changed, but then it needs to be applied. But then we get into, you know, what is, is that the best, is that the best practice?
I'd say that you can't have rules for thee and not for me. That's not how it works, and that I think that we should all abide by it. I mean, if you don't have anything to hide, then what difference does it make? Essentially, if you don't comply, then you are saying there could be something wrong here. I'm not going to be transparent. And quite frankly, I would say that if we don't follow the policy, then we do need to be disciplined to the fullest extent of the, that the board norms and protocols allow us to happen.
I think over here, the question is not like, no, we're following or not, absolutely we need to follow it. I think it's just a procedural thing that it's not clear exactly what's the process because, you know, through the training that I had about FOIA, I think I've been through maybe two or three already, something like that. And it's clear with the officer what their duties are and everything, but like, no, this is the first time that I encountered, like, you know, as far as, like, no, which device and who needs, who has access to it.
Right. And that's not listed, I'm looking at KBA right now.
I read the same thing. It's not on there. I absolutely owe for transparency now in all of our communication. Just don't know, is it something that we, Ms. Mallon, do we need to clarify within the policy, the records?
So, can I ask just a quick question? I'm sorry, Mr. Pyavich.
Sure.
I think the middle part is pretty clear. Officers, employees, and members of the school board who fail to provide public records as required by FOIA because they altered or destroyed the request records with the intent to avoid the provisions of FOIA are subject to penalties in their individual capacity of up to $100 per record altered or destroyed. I think that's pretty, I think that's pretty clear.
It doesn't say the procedure, though. That's the issue. And I did check everything, and I turned in what I had and noted what I did not have. You know, the, if a device doesn't have something, it doesn't have something.
Well, the information was sent to you on Tuesday, July 9th, that you requested, and you responded July 16th.
And if I could point out, under policy KBA, third paragraph, it states the FOIA officer serves as a point of contact for members of the public and requesting public records and coordinates the school board's compliance with FOIA. So, as she's coordinating the compliance, she's the one who has established a practice, and that's why it's a practice and not a policy. She's established a practice, and the practice is you bring your phone in and you allow her to search it, and she searched all the other phones to keep it a consistent and equitable search of all board members' phones.
And I would add that the request in July or June when this happened wasn't the first request that the board has received. You guys unfortunately had to endure January, February, March, and routinely turned your phones in, so this was outside of the scope of how that happened. So, the practice was working for several months, and then, in this case, it did not.
Well, I think it was when it was found out that other divisions and other elected officials do not get summoned into the office, they are sent what the FOIA is, so they see the actual FOIA request, the form, or how it is received via email, and then the elected official turns in, if they have a device, the York County device, so that's not an issue of checking that, and you all have access to the emails. And then, it's up to us as elected officials with our oath that we check our personal devices and turn in what we have, and if we don't have it, we respond saying we don't have anything on the personal device.
So, if I could ask my FOIA officer to come to the podium so she could share her perspective on the process, I think Ms. Goff's been here for 12 years, and I'm not sure if she's been the...
Yes, sir. I have 18 years of experience as a FOIA officer.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm going to speak from experience, why we do what we do, and why I have done this with the board members, with this board and prior board members, in that, A, as Ms. Berry has stated, it's equitable practices. We do this together. You can tell I'm looking at, you sat next to me, right, while we did the search? In fact, most times, you held the phone in your hand, I told you what to look for, you continued that search. Within the last three years, we have actually been part of a different FOIA request in which records were requested, and when they were submitted, and it was not this board, but we were conjoined to the request, one elected official turned in emails and texts from their devices in the scenario that was brought forward, that they checked their own. It included communications with another board member, and that board member did not locate or turn in those devices, that chain of communication. We establish and follow our practices to ensure one individual does not miss something another individual shows, therefore, as Mr. Schaefer has shared, indicating a potential malintent in withholding a record. So, we've had the personal experience of this. This is why we follow our practices.
So, I think what I was hearing, Ms. Fairman, you were saying is, it sounded like you're not on board with the practice, that you don't like the practice, and that may be the practice you want changed, but I don't think we, I don't see that we can just go arbitrarily and just do something differently without going back first and changing what we have.
Well, it looks like we, it looks like we don't have the practice in policy. The practice isn't there, it's just kind of, it's what we've always done.
Right. So, other divisions do it a different way, so I guess we're going to do whatever they do, instead of doing what we do here in York County.
No, just keeping track, because also checking with our board of supervisors, with our local officials in the General Assembly, that they are asked what it is, and then they turn in. It's up to them as elected officials. It is their responsibility to go through and make sure everything is turned in.
It just doesn't show good integrity, I don't think, but that's just me. I thought it was working, I mean, four of us did it all this time, and all of a sudden, boom, it just stops with one person? What was the problem?
Just checking to know how elected officials are treated and respected.
It's the public, or the community, that's asking the questions for the FOIA, not me.
Right. And it's up to each elected official to make sure that they turn that in, which I did. And, you know, I looked at my things, and one of the things that was interesting is there was a FOIA training at the SBMA Empower Ed, and it was Megan Rhine, I have to look up her name again, I'm sorry, but, hang on one moment, and I will get that for you. She is, she's a specialist in FOIA, just a second. Megan Rhine, the Virginia Coalition for Open Government. She is an attorney. She has championed open government in Virginia since 1998, University of Colorado law grad, and advocates for transparency, organizes FOIA seminars, and works with FOIA inquiries from the public and media, and with the General Assembly.
Okay. You know, I really don't care how loud and You know, I really don't care how Loudoun County does it, Spotsylvania County does it, anyone else does it. We've done, I've been here for five years and followed every FOIA request that was ever asked of me, and I think if you aren't, then it shows that you have a total lack of respect for your constituents, that you could be potentially hiding something.
No, I did follow everything, I just asked for more information that I was, I found out that I was allowed to-
Did you ever turn in your phone?
I don't turn in your phone, and by law, that's not required, your personal phone. It is up to us as individual elected officials to look through our phones.
Didn't you get a complaint about noise from a constituent from Tad Middle School on your personal phone?
I will have to look.
I really think what we need to do here is-
Oh, I know what you were talking about.
Just follow the process.
Just, just a little sec. I really think what we need to do is like, no, we do have a pro, process, Ms. Goff, that you, you're following, and I would suggest that we put that in writing to systematically put what exactly is gonna be done and implement that into our policy, so we don't have any more questions and issues about this thing.
Yeah, I, I would offer that the FOIA process in law has been around for quite some time.
Yes.
The policy has been in place for quite a long time. This count, I've been here for 10 years, Ms. Goff has been my FOIA, or our FOIA officer for a decade, and that's a practice. There's a difference between a policy and a practice, correct, Ms. Berry?
Correct.
So, the, it's, when, when there's a FOIA done with the phones, because it's happened to me multiple times since I've been here, as Ms. Goff said from the podium, that's how the, that's the practice, it's, she doesn't even wanna hold your phone. I mean, she's done it with many of you, she'll sit there and say, pull this up, type this in, because there's specific-
Hell yeah.
Well, yeah, there's specific searches that are involved. So I, I don't know if the answer is put the practice in writing, because we just explained the practice. I mean, truly, we just explained the practice. So, the, the expectation would be that if the FOIA officer contacts any staff member, because she, it's a timeline, right? Don't we have five days to respond? So we have five days to respond, and when that comes in, we contact board members, you come in that day, or, you know, as soon as you can, because we're, she and the division are on a timeline by law to provide those documents, or the division is in trouble, or there'll be a consequence for the division, correct? So to me, a reasonable expectation would be if you receive a FOIA for your phone or for whatever that information is, comply, bring the phone in. I don't think, I don't think it's asking too much, that's just my, my opinion. Because I have 2,000 staff members here, that if they're FOIA'd, that's what I would tell them, bring your phone in, come in, and principal, AP, AD, whoever, that's the expectation. If it's a coach, bring it in.
Right.
And so that we can look for the information, do our due diligence, and move on to the next situation that we're dealing with. So I think the, the issue or the problem comes in when, when you don't comply to the rules or the practice that we've always done.
Well, I can just say for myself, like, no, I do believe and I do comply, so it's up to you guys.
I have no issue with it, I mean, I, I think it's a good practice. Again, I feel like I have nothing to hide, so why, I, why won't I share the phone? I mean, and it, it's worked, it's worked up to this point.
Well, and furthermore, the, the, the board members have phones that are paid for by the public. So if, if the FOIA officer comes and asks for your, your work phone, so to speak, your YCSD phone, the answer should be, I'll come in, in an hour, I'll come in tomorrow, or I'll be in the end of the day, because it takes five minutes. It's not like it's a, you know, a long session for this information, especially when the device that you're using for public business
Right.
is paid for by the school division.
Right. And you already have immediate access to the emails, it's basically just the text messages if there's anything there.
Correct.
So then, are you, you're okay with bringing in your phone? I'm not sure where we stand.
I still say elected officials, it is up to you to, to check it. You, you have your thing, and if, if you want me to drop off the phone, you know, sometime or whatever, and I will stay with it, but the, the issue is, is that for immediate checking, check the, the text messages. I can do that.
Okay.
No one's ever asked-
And I have.
No one has asked you to drop off your phone. You've said, just come in so that we can follow the same process that we followed in January, February, March, April, and May.
I would, I wouldn't just drop off the phone, I obviously would stay with it in that case, but with, with the school phone, once again, it is still up to the elected official to check it.
Where, where is that written?
I will have to look that up.
Maybe that would be helpful if, yeah, we can get our hands on something where it says that, to, so we can have it and we can look at it, that would probably be a good idea.
You can sort of look that up, wouldn't that, wouldn't that go away from the spirit of what FOIA is? I mean, if, if the whole point of FOIA is for the public to
Transparent.
request information from elected officials or school officials or government officials, then why would they give you the option to check it yourself?
Right.
I just, I don't understand that reasoning.
I would say let's go by the FOIA process. If it's not followed and we knowingly disregard it, then we should be disciplined by the board norms and protocol.
Right, I don't think we should knowingly disregard it, I don't think that's, yeah, right at all, so, and we have, I mean, we have a policy that, or protocols that outline that. So I would like to make a motion that we comply with our original practice of how we're handling FOIA requests, so.
Point of order, I think we need to have everything in writing first so we can actually take a look at it and review it.
I would pull up policy KBA, because it's in writing.
The procedure is not in KBA.
The FOIA officer serves as a point of contact for members of the public and requesting public records and coordinates the school board's compliance with FOIA. The FOIA officer receives training at least once during each consecutive period of two calendar years, beginning on the date on which the FOIA officer last completed training, sessioned by the school board's legal counsel or the Freedom of Information Advisory Council. So, i- if we wanna prac, if we wanna write two sentences that say the FOIA officer will call board member, board member will bring in phone, I personally think that's, it's a given, that, that's a given request. If, if that's something that the board wants to spend time on and put in writing, then that's, that's, again, that's your prerogative as board members. However, again, if the board is gonna, because your job is policy, my, my job is practice. So I under, I fully understand the practice, and I think that the majority of the board understands that practice, but the board isn't responsible for writing the practice, you're responsible for the policy.
Actually, yeah, I agree that the board is responsible for the policy and then the superintendent is for implementing that particular policy. And I know with our other policies, we make sure things are written down, it is not just floating out there as, well, we've done this before. We make sure that it's written specifically in policy, and so I think it needs to be followed for this one in particular if we're going to do that. Thank you.
So I guess the question begs, if, if, if a parent calls the school, should we write a practice specifically designed so the principal knows how to call back a parent and respond to a question or information that's requested by a parent? Do we need a practice for that?
Let's not get ridiculous.
I think this-
I think we're already there.
We're already there.
Sorry.
I mean, if we're gonna have a practice for a two-step process, again, as, as a superintendent that we're, we're managing, you know, 13,000 kids and 2,000 staff members, to ask for it, to write down a two-step pro, process is exactly what the word that you just said, in my opinion.
Okay. In response to your motion, I'll second.
Okay. I just, just discussion. I just wanna say that I think that we should move forward with it, keep the things that, you know, how's we have done them, so that we can continue the practice. If you wanna go ahead and, you know, get policy and we can circle back, we can definitely look at it, but I think moving forward, we have to have some kind of solidarity on what we're doing, we just can't kinda leave it out there, it doesn't sit right with me. It's, I, I have no problem with it, I think most of us don't have a problem with it right now, and if we, like I said, wanna look at it later, bring it back, you know, personally, there's a million and one things that are important to focus on, and while I'm not saying this is not important, I don't think this is the highest level of importance that we need to focus on at this time.
And I would, I would remind the board, you don't, and just, just to clarify one of the words, you said solidarity, you don't need solidarity, you need majority.
Well, majority.
Right? You know what I'm saying?
We need majority.
Like, really, three of you, again-
Solidarity is great, love to have solidarity, but
Right.
right now, we need majority.
Right.
So, you seconded, Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mrs. Goodwin and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to comply with original practice for FOIA requests. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
No, we need it written.
The motion passed four to one.
Okay, our next topic is board rules and responsibilities, I'm gonna defer over to Dr. Shander.
Yes, thank you. And so this is related to school board norms and protocols. We had a situation, Mr. Richardson began to mention it earlier during the discussion, where a citizen contacted a board member, and according to the board's norms and protocols, the citizen should have been referred to the school. However, the board member sent a video and a phone number with a name to contact with the board member summary of the concern. I then asked for how the information was received, it was shared that it was a personal text. So I then asked for the personal text as it addresses public business regarding the school division, and this communication is public record. So my question, this question is now for Ms. Berry, for clarification, is a personal text message to an elected official related to the business of the school division considered a public record, and if so, is this a FOIA violation?
The key to a public record is it's in the course of public business. Did the text message have to do with public business? If it does, it doesn't matter if it's on a personal phone, or if it's a personal, included in a personal message, it's public business and it's FOI-able, and if that information is not provided, it would be conceived as a FOIA violation.
And I'll just, just say that in my training and years on the board, I've had people contact me on my personal Facebook page about school board issues. As soon as I read the first line and says "school board," I reply back, please text me at this number, and I give them my school board phone number with your information, that way it's documented on a school board device, and I don't have to worry about having my personal stuff FOIA'd. And that's the way I've been handling it, and I've only had it happen like maybe once or twice, I think, in my, my years on the school board. But that was something that I learned during FOIA training, that that's the way to do it, to keep, keep your personal stuff separate from your school board stuff. But that's just, just me.
I believe I passed along the information to Dr. Shandor's, you know, following how, you know, we're supposed to pass things on to you when we get issues like that. I will have to go back and look, I thought I had passed along the, the, the video and the information.
You, you did, you passed the video, her contact information, and then you wrote a separate narrative about noise pollution. I emailed you back and I said, please send me, I said, was it, was it a pers, how did you receive it? An email, a text message or whatnot? And you said it was a personal text?
Right.
And I said, please forward me that information. So, because when we're, when I'm having staff address concerns and issues, which as board members, you know, you receive, you know, whether it's an instructional issue or a pothole in a parking lot, I mean, you're, you're sending those, that information. So I have to then share that with appropriate staff members so they can contact folks and we can work.
Right. I will have to go back and look to see if I screenshot, or if I did a copy and paste to send you the information on that, but I was open in who had sent it, she had said to let you know the information, sent the video, and passed that along. I, I don't think I would have to go back and, and double check on that, but it, I did not deny any information that I know of.
I wouldn't know because I never received the response and email from you, so I don't, I don't know if there was additional information or what you put in there was accurate. I wouldn't have that information because I didn't get the issues directly from the constituent.
Well, and that's what she said, she wanted to go into more detail with whoever could call her about that, and that's why she said, please pass along my personal information so that they can get the, the details, which is what I did.
And I would caution the board members, when we receive citizen complaints or citizen concerns, a lot of times the FOIA request, it's, it's hidden inside that, that communication because they don't have to say this is a FOIA request. And that's what Ms. Goff has trained on, and so by sending the exact message, forwarding it, Ms. Goff could then look at it and, and tease out the exact request, and that way, that ensures the division is not violating FOIA, and we're answering exactly what they need.
I mean, I think that's smart practice anyway. I mean, a lot of times I get texts or emails from, you know, citizens in the district and, you know, I don't know the context and everything behind it, so my first, you know, way of handling it is to reply and say, you know, thank you for your concern, I'm going to forward this to my superintendent who will make sure that the appropriate person receives it and can deal with it. You know, I think that's the best way, it's just, here, here's the information, and I really don't, if somebody's gonna send me something and, that they want me to handle but tell me not to share it, I can't do anything with that. I mean, I, you know, I have to be able to communicate it to somebody who can do it, because I'm not, I'm not out, I'm not there 24/7, I don't see what's going on and know all the background stuff, so I think it's just good practice, that's, that's what we do, we send it on.
Well, if you look at the fifth, if you go onto board norms and protocols and you look at the fifth item, it's responding to staff or community complaints outside of school board meetings. It just says, board members will refer the community member through the proper channel of communication, which as I mentioned, in this case, should have been the principal at, at this particular middle school. It's, it's stated in the student handbook and conduct code addressing concerns in the family engagement and communication section.
Right.
And then let the superintendent know of this conversation, and again, we've, we've tried to encourage, you know, board members to use the Let's Talk platform, however, I feel like, you know, the majority of you that receive a, any type of concern, typically you'll, you'll respond to the person and just copy me on it, and, and that, I think that's worked very well, because then we have the information directly from the ni, uh, community member, parent, business owner, whoever it might be that has a question or concern, you'll quickly send that to us and then we can make sure the appropriate person responds to it. However, when we don't have all the information, it, it makes it difficult for our staff members to try and work through things. If you try to, if you try, in your attempts to interpret what they were saying, just, just send us, send us what they said or refer them to the person, it just, it makes things direct. You know, the, the direct problem can go to the person who could solve the problem versus having it get something missed. Again, it's, it's number five on the board norms and protocols.
So, are we all goo, are we all good with that protocol? I mean, that's-
Four of us are, four of us, four of us signed the board norms and protocols, one did not, so I guess that's where we're at, so we need to move on, she's not gonna comply.
But I did think that you were okay with it, this was, that's what I wanna ascertain, is that a-
No, I did, I did not sign the norms and protocols
Well, you're right.
because we're governed by our oath to the Virginia and US Constitution and Virginia law.
That's right.
That's it?
Yep.
The, you know, that's the ultimate.
That's true, but, you know, we have board norms and protocols, and I understand your hesitancy with it in a way, but it does provide some guardrails for us as a board, I think, that are useful. I think, that are useful. And for, I mean, we were all in agreement when we voted on those, that those were useful. And we had the opportunity to strike any, add any, or change any that we didn't think really worked for us. I don't think there was anything in there that, you know, wasn't actually useful.
Is there a law that requires us to have a norms and protocols and follow it?
There, there's no law. It wasn't about having a law. It was about, about, again, like a best practice.
Madam Chair, I think we're wasting our time on this, so can we move on to the next topic?
I'm good. We don't need to vote or anything, do we? Do we need to, to vote on, like we did the last?
No, we've already voted.
I have one request.
Yes.
We don't, we, and the board does not need, need to do this now, but I'm aware that the board members have seen my contract, and many of the people in the community have seen my contract. I would ask the board members to review my contract under where it says how complaints are handled. So I ha, I have a contract with a board.
Right.
That states in there how that's supposed to happen. So I would encourage board members to read my contract. Because it is, the board norms and protocols are just, are guiding practices, it's best practices.
Right.
This board, this, your county school board went years without...
I remember you telling us that, yeah.
...having board norms and protocols. And didn't, and the board chose to implement them when they needed to implement them.
Right.
Meaning they had to start it, so we had some guardrails, and, and so we're doing things consistently.
Right.
Because some folks, you know, were having a hard time with that. So I don't think it's asking too much.
I don't either. I mean, I, I think they're good. I, you know, it's helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna, hearing nothing else, I'm going to move on. We're going to go ahead and go to Policy A: Foundations and Basic Commitments. This was something that we tabled last time because some of us just, you know, were wrestling with some of the language. So it says, are we going to do a right to vote or discussion first then vote?
You can discuss.
Okay. Before we go to motion first and second, is there any discussion that we want to have right here about that policy? Or do we want to move just to vote?
Point of order, I believe with Robert's Rules, you have to have a motion first and then discussion. You have to motion seconded, and then you have discussion before the vote.
You can do it either way, I think.
Well, I, we can certainly do it that way. I don't have a problem with it. Can I get, the motion would be a first and a second to approve revisions to Policy A: Foundations and Basic Commitments.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the changes as provided or presented for Section A: Foundations of Bas, and Basic Commitments.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now we can have discussion. Okay. Would like to have any discussion centered around...
I'll go ahead and start the discussion because I, I had some questions about the, the language and the, the wording and the verbiage that was being used. But after some discussion with counsel, found out that these are basic things that are in the law. And we swore an oath to follow the law, and think we need to follow the law. If someone doesn't like the language, then they would need to approach the General Assembly or the federal government to get them to make those changes. But we have to, at, at this level, at our level, we have to follow the law. And all this does is protect 18 and older students and also employees that are in protected class by the law. So that's all I have.
Regarding that, I'll go ahead and I'll read, there was a legal memorandum given to the board members, I believe at the October meeting, from Founding Freedom's Law Center. The question that some citizens presented was, is the York County School Board required by law to add the phrase "sexual orientation" or the phrase "gender identity" to its list of protected classifications for its students? The answer is no. Nothing in Virginia or federal law requires the school board to adopt such a policy. This is the analysis that they gave. Title 22.1 Education of the Virginia Code covers all matters involving education in Virginia's public schools. Except for charter schools, no statute within Title 22.1 offers or requires any special non-discrimination protections for students on the basis of either sexual orientation or gender identity in Virginia's public schools. And no law requires the school board to adopt such a policy. Virginia Code 22.1-23.3 does direct the Virginia Department of Education to develop model policies, quote, "concerning the treatment of transgender students in public elementary and secondary schools," unquote, on seven specific topics. And it requires school boards to adopt policies consistent therewith. The Youngkin administration has developed those policies entitled mol, quote, "model policies on ensuring privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents in Virginia public schools," unquote. Moreover, the Virginia Human Rights Act, VHRA, which generally prohibits discrimination on certain bases and certain contexts, does not apply, I bless you, does not apply to minors in places of public accommodation. And significantly, the VHRA does not waive sovereign immunity, so it cannot be enforced against public school districts. For all these reasons, the law does not support a contention that York County is required to add the categories of, quote, "sectional orientation," unquote, or, quote, "gender identity," unquote, to its non-discrimination policy.
And I think the only part I would argue is that if we don't apply this, it makes it look like in our other policies, we have it. But in this one, we're not. So we're singling out employees or, or people that are 18 or older by not identifying them. I don't, I don't, it's, it's verbiage, it's wording of a specific class that was, that was protected by the government. And, and again, I think by not changing the policy, but having it elsewhere in the policy, again, it makes it look like we're singling out this class, and we're not going to protect them. And it opens us up to liability.
I agree with you in that, in some respect. My, I would say my only concern, and I know our students are protected under Policy, so A is umbrella, we've got J.
J for the students.
For the students receiving equal education. And then Policy, is it K? K?
G.
G.
Yeah, for the personnel.
For harassment, protection and free for harassment.
JB is for the educational opportunities.
Yes.
That nobody will be discriminated against those policies.
Right.
And then for JFHA or GBA, it's for harassment and retaliation. So those are two policies that already reflect sexual orientation and gender identity.
Right, so our students are protected, and that's my main concern. I want to make sure there's protection.
So they are.
But, when it, with Policy A, and I see Policy A as a broad policy, my only concern is there's no guardrails around those terms. And when you look at, if you look at the, the CDC definition, I think even the code, we looked up Code of Virginia, I think, too, it's broad. And I would just like to see more guardrails around that because I worry that somehow there's something we're missing, we don't see, that opens us up down the road.
I would like to amend the motion, actually, for this. The only language that I believe that it doesn't truly reflect, and it's specific enough for us to be able to be specific on, on, on this issue, would be gender identity. By the CDC, as you mentioned, the terminology for it, where I'm having a very hard time in issue with the, like, you know, the fact that this, that it doesn't define actually what it is. Because gender identity, according to CDC, is individual sense of their self as a man, woman, transgender, or something else.
Yeah, what is something else?
So the, something else is, I, I don't know what. I understand, like, you know, a man, woman, transgender, but that something else is what I'm having a issue with. So I would make motion for us to remove that because it just is not defined.
So your motion is to amend the policy?
Amend this language to remove the gender identity out of this non-discrimination clause.
Mr. Pajovic, would you take a friendly amendment to that and include the sexual orientation phrase also to be removed?
For, like, sexual orientation, for me, is like, you know, it's something that's personal. And what I'm seeing as, like, you know, even according to CDC reflection of it, is it refers to person or sexual or emotional attraction to another person, and the behavior or social affiliation that may result from this attraction. Example, lesbian, gay, or bisexual. So for, for me, that's something that, like I said, it's a personal, and it's defined in, like, how they feel about themselves. So the, I, I just don't see that, that language personally would be reflecting, like, my beliefs, that would be...
I believe it's open, open-ended.
You know, with... I'm, I'm okay with sexual orientation. I'm not comfortable, and I said, with the, the identity because it's too broad.
It's unspecified.
I don't know, you know, we have guardrails around things for a reason. I feel like there needs to be some kind of a guardrail. That's all. So, you want, your amended policy is...
To have the gender identity removed.
Removed. And to, at least we can get some guardrails or something.
Yes, because it's just undefined. Something else, it could be broad. It is broad.
What does our counsel have to say about it?
To bring up the lunch thing.
He knew it was going to come to you.
Yeah.
I would caution the board. We have the Virginia Human Rights Act, which applies to 18 and older, which includes students and staff. Because we have 18-year-old students, we have 20-year-old students. The Department of Agriculture that runs the free and reduced lunch and breakfast programs, we sign a form that says that we will uphold their non-discrimination practices.
And I agree with that because I read, read through them, like, you know, their policy says, nobody will be denied their benefits.
Correct.
On discriminatory policies, which we don't. We, according to Dr. Shandor and our staff, including you, we did not have any discriminatory allegation ever in past based on any of these issues. So for us to work with them, and actually, there was a complaint for the USDA that you have to be discriminated against.
Correct.
To comply, to apply...
They have to allege discrimination.
Exactly. And it still doesn't, like, reflect on us that we will be denied their services and their program.
Well, it would be a facial challenge. So where their, their allegation is that, on, on its face, the fact that we don't have this in our policy shows that we're discriminatory against them. So it's good, it can open us up to liability. They might not win, but it's still going to open us up.
I understand, it's like, but I don't see, like, reason why would somebody be denied in our school system for any reason to receive the free meal?
Yeah, we wouldn't deny anybody.
Ms. Berry, by my...
We follow law.
Ms. Berry, point of order, when Mr. Pajovic made his motion, there was never a second for the discussion.
Okay.
Correct. We'd have to have a second for the amendment. I would just have concerns, and maybe we put a definition of gender identity. Maybe we put definitions of some of the terms in our policy.
That's what, that's my guardrail. That's the guardrail I'm, I'm looking for. Okay. So...
So is the definition... Is the definition of gender identity the holdup? And it's because it says gender, transgender, whatever, and then it says or anything else?
No, it's not, it's not even transgender. It's like, what it is, it's individual sense of their self as a man, woman, or something else.
Or something else.
Transgender, or something else.
So if we took, if we made our...
So it's the sense of...
Right.
Anything.
If we made our definition and took or something else out, would that...
Like, it's just the gender identity, like, itself, the word, like, so what are you trying to do?
You'd have to put, you, we'd have to add in terminology, I think, to...
That's what I'm saying.
That's what we're talking about.
That's what I'm saying. Would that make it...
I think that we could get there. But I don't think, some of us aren't comfortable adopting it as is because how broad.
So Ms. Berry, if we were to, if we were to come up with a definition of gender identity that was palatable for all the board members, is that possible?
I was looking to see if the Department of Agriculture had a definition of gender identity.
They don't.
Because they had pretty much everything. A person's internal sense of being male, female, or something else such as gen, agender, binary, gender fluid, gender non-conforming, gender queer, or non-binary. If we could just refer to, if they have a definition, if I can find it, we can just refer to that definition.
That's what I was asking.
But we need to do a little, that's a little time research.
Yeah, maybe we need to do some more research before we, we vote on this and do it in January.
So can we then make a motion?
We, we've been dealing with this policy now for about, what, two months? Two and a half months?
Yeah, two months.
Doing research every meeting? So, like...
Well, we're narrowing it down. We're down to...
We're narrowing it down. If we come back with a better definition, some guardrail...
I understand that, but I'm just talking about, like, no, we're doing more research, more research every time.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying, I was saying, do we make a motion to move it again to unfinished business in January, giving time to take a look at that? Get some clarity, some guardrails around that? Would that be acceptable?
I'm, I'm okay with it. None of my...
We're okay with the motion? Okay. So...
Making a motion to table?
I'm making a motion that we move this, Policy A: Foundations and Basics, Basic Commitments, to unfinished business at our January work session? Or it would be, the vote would be at the board meeting?
We could do it at the work session, too, couldn't we?
We don't typically vote at the work session.
We don't typically do it, but I mean, we've, we've let it go this long.
But we can.
You can make that a special meeting.
Okay. We can make it a special meeting. And that way, we'll have some time to get to research.
Board members can be contacted by the attorney with the definition they all, everybody's good with.
And so we can put some guardrails around it.
Right. I'm, I'm okay with that.
So that everybody feels good about what we're voting on.
I'm okay with that.
Is that okay? Okay. So can I get a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
All right. Great. Ms. Howard?
We did have an original motion, a first and a second, so I'm wondering, do we...
No, we had a first. We never got a second.
Well, we had a first by Mr. Richardson to approve.
And a second.
And then a second by Mr. Schaefer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we were discussing, and I was amending it.
Right. So the discussion was to amend.
So we need to vote on it, then deny it, and then move it on.
Do we have to vote and deny it, and then make it?
Or...
We have a second.
Is the motion, if that is what I'm understanding of being put in place?
That is, yes.
Yes.
I'm amenable to that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
With the substitute motion?
Yes.
Right.
Did you get all that? I'm sorry, folks. I, I, I'm learning. This is my year of chair learning Robert's Rules of Order, so there's, it's a big book. There's a lot to it.
I pulled it up. I cheated.
I'm learning, too.
So what do we vote now?
Okay, so I'm good to do this.
To move it to January.
Yes, now we're going to move it to January.
To move it to January.
Okay, here we go.
Where we go final vote?
A motion was made by Mr. Richards, or I'm sorry, by Mrs. Goodwin and seconded by Mr. Richardson to table Policy A to unfinished business to our January work session. Mr. Pajovic?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
All right. Thank you. All right.[1668.33] All right, thank you. All right, thank you for your patience, folks. We have no presentations, so we're going to move on to comments of citizens. We have two opportunities to speak this evening. The first is for general topics, and the second is a forum specifically relating to comments regarding the capital improvements program and operating budget. Before I open for public comments, I will share some remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling civility, and respect for our students. We ask that speakers direct their comments to the school board as a whole and not to one individual. Speakers will present their comments at the podium. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The yellow light will come on first. That gives you about twenty seconds before the red. The timer will begin after you state your name and district. If a concern is brought to the board's attention, a staff member will reach out to you to follow up. I now open the public participation for comments of citizens. Okay, start with, okay? I think that's on the wrong card, but.
Yeah, well, there's no.
Okay, it doesn't matter. I'm just making.
I would use the white cards, correct?
Yeah, white card.
Yes.
But that's not a public hearing, is it? Oh, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure I'm doing it right. All right, our first speaker tonight is Ms. Pam Pouchot from District Four.
McGruder Community, which was named after the Confederate General John B. McGruder. This community was home to freed slaves and their descendants, but the federal government twice confiscated their property and relocated them to the Grove area. John McGruder was a slave owner and as a soldier for the Confederacy burned most of Hampton to the ground to prevent contraband slaves from living in the community. Please correct me if I am misinformed. I have not heard about any discussions about changing the name of this school. Does this reflect a lack of caring or a lack of belief in the truth about how the name came about? Or that you just prefer to keep the name in place to honor a slaveholder and a traitor to the U.S. who killed American soldiers? The people of York County deserve to be told what each of you think about this matter and why. If a name change is to occur, may I suggest a more neutral name such as Equality Elementary or Freedom Elementary to reflect the fifty-two percent minority student population? Or better yet, ask students and faculty to make suggestions and not a committee that allows a handful of people to make the decision for the many. Let everyone get involved who wants to be part of the solution. There is always a cost of a name change to consider. Besides the name of the school on the exterior, all other items where the name appears can be changed over time as the items need to be replaced or reordered. Changing the name of the school is in the best interest of the students and the county. Let's not honor those who have done nothing to deserve it and are in fact a disgrace to humanity. And on another issue, I realize it's controversial, but honestly, why does the school board care who loves who, how they identify sexually? It is absolutely ridiculous. These are human beings. Consider them human beings. Don't worry about their sexual orientation. It's ridiculous.
Sorry, our next speaker is Dr. Allen Kennedy.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Allen Kennedy, and I am a proud resident and taxpayer in District One. And apparently, I pay for a phone for school board members, including Ms. Fairman, who refuses to turn over that phone to retrieve the text messages in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, which is a state law. So I'm paying for that phone, and Ms. Fairman is refusing to follow the law. Now, Ms. Fairman, just a few minutes ago, tried to make a whole bunch of different excuses for why she is refusing to follow the law. And she said that, she said it was, she got this idea at a, at an SBMA. Now, remember, the SBMA is an organization that this district does not subscribe to and does not endorse, but it is, it is a right-wing organization that Ms. Fairman belongs to. And she said that there was a training by Megan Ryan. Well, after she said that, I called Megan Ryan. And Megan Ryan said, that's not what she said. Ms. Fairman misinterpreted Megan Ryan's advice, because Megan Ryan is a lawyer who understands the law. And Megan Ryan said, she said, she actually told Ms. Fairman that nothing compels turning over a personal phone if it, if it doesn't have public business on it. But it does compel turning over the government-paid phone if it does have with public business on that. And it's, it's, and she also, she also advised Ms. Fairman, at Ms. Fairman's request for clarification, Ms. Fairman asked for, asked, well, what if there are four key words, and one of them, three about public business and one about Trump? Now, I think she's, I think Ms. Fairman's referring to a FOIA request that I made some months ago. Ms. Ryan, Megan Ryan advised that the, that Ms. Fairman does not have the legal authority to decide in advance what is and is not public business. That is the province of the FOIA officer. So, Ms. Fairman, would you be willing to correct the record now that we all know that you did not accurately reflect your conversation with Attorney Megan Ryan?
The question that I asked was dealing with in generalities, and the issue was when you're given just words, how do we know if it's dealing with public issues or if it's a personal one? And that's the one that you take a screenshot off and you send it in. If there's question of whether it's dealing with school board policy.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Mary Lassiter.
Good evening. I lived in Jame City County, but we went to Frederick Douglass for our entertainment, our recreation during the summer. And that school name was changed to McGruder Elementary. And Frederick Douglass was a safe haven to us, because we were not allowed to go to McGruder Elementary to use their facilities back in the fifties and the early sixties. And the village of, we have Camp Perry that has verified in their pamphlet that the school, that the village of McGruder was named after John B. McGruder. And it says, the village of McGruder was named in honor of General James B. McGruder. And they, they encompassed the land that is now Camp Perry. And I don't think that York County can dispute with the Navy, United States Navy, what that previous name was. And I want to reiterate some points that were made last week. That newspaper article of 2021, it stated that some historians had been contacted to give their opinion on whether that school name should be changed. And when we met with some school administrators, they could not really tell us what the historians said. I doubt if those historians were even familiar with McGruder. I believe one, there was no name given, but I believe that one was maybe an expert on Slavetown. Another one had attended segregated integrated schools back in the sixties. He, I spoke with one of his friends. She said that he didn't know that much about the McGruder area. And so when you have a meeting like that and you're getting historians to give their input and you put it in the paper, you should tell what those reasons were and what, who those people were. It should be some notes made somewhere, but that was not presented to us. Okay, the people of McGruder do not feel lost. That is not a true statement. Those people were displaced, some of them were displaced back in nineteen eighteen. So they definitely were had established, reestablished themselves. And that was just a tagline that a student that women Mary had used in his dissertation about the lost tribe in McGruder. So that's just a fallacy. Okay, McGruder was in Bruton District as early as nineteen twenty. The students were moved to Peniman Road. And the new school was built in nineteen fifty-one, and it's stated in the Daily Press in nineteen fifty-four that the school was named in honor of John B. McGruder. And you can't say seventy-two years later that the school was named in honor of a predominantly black community. That's like saying, I'm gonna have a birthday party, but you're not allowed to come to your own birthday party. Black students were not able to go to McGruder.
Lassiter. At this time, is there anybody who has not signed up to speak that would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Just state your name and district.
Good evening, Danielle Francis, District Two, my child, niece and nephew are York County students. I wanted to address some of the things at the board meeting tonight. I would like to request immediate sanctions for Linda Fairman. Anyone having sat through the Virginia State FOIA training recognizes the dilemma here, recognizes the hostile spirit, recognizes that the intent of the FOIA training is not being acknowledged, and this is not professional, and this is contrary to how any group of people should be working. There should be immediate sanctions. There should be immediate action to rectify this. If not, the entire board should be held accountable. Rules and guidelines are in place, the guardrails you speak of, so that we have functioning bodies and groups that can complete business. The antics, the obstructive behavior, the unprofessional behavior, the lack of transparency is ridiculous. This has to stop. There need to be immediate sanctions moving forward. If not, this entire board is accountable. The second point that I'd like to point out is nobody needs to look through defining, defining gender identity or sexual orientation. Merriam-Webster's done that. There are human rights groups that have done that. This information is out there. Please educate yourself. Let's stop vilifying people. Let's stop making things dangerous that aren't dangerous. There's real work that needs to be done. Our taxpayer dollars are paying for you all to meet. Many of you ran on a notion of fiscal responsibility. I have yet to see that. I have seen time and energy wasted, taxpayer dollars wasted. Oh, and we pay for cell phones, that we then don't have the right to the information on those cell phones. This is absurd. Please, meet, pull yourselves together, and let's behave like grownups, moving forward, conducting business in the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I now close the public hearing. Excuse me. I'm sorry, I now close the public participation for comments of citizens. Okay, we will move on to the public hearing on FY twenty-six Superintendent Recommended Capital Improvement Plan. Dr. Shandor, do you have any remarks before we begin?
Yes, just, just a few. So this evening is an opportunity for the community to give us input and feedback related to the capital improvement plan. As you recall, board members, Dr. Carroll presented on November eighteenth, the, at the work session, the Facilities Master Plan, which was, if you recall, a descriptive report with all kinds of numbers, including capacity at our schools. Excuse me, and all the projects and where they are, the projects that we've completed, let me, let me show that, and the projects that are sort of on the horizon. If you recall, he also added in, I think it was an appendix or a section in there that lists all of the projects that have been done in every school. I think that was very helpful for the board members, and I think that's very helpful for our community. It clearly shows what projects are next, right? And this evening, Mr. Bowen, our Chief Financial Officer, presented information on elementary, middle, and high school projects in the school division, as well as some division-level projects. He shared those earlier at the work session, and if you look at the proposed CIP, which is, the FY twenty-six year is what, what you'll be eventually taking action on. The total capital projects for the, for that year, FY twenty-six, would be over twenty million dollars. The total capital projects in cash would be three million dollars, so the net for the, the amount that, to be funded and financed by the county would be just over seventeen million dollars. So that's the information I have to share. I don't believe anyone was signed up for the.
No, we do not have anybody signed up at this time for the public hearing on recommended capital improvements. So with that said, I now close public hearing on FY twenty-six Superintendent Recommended Capital Improvements Program, and we will move forward with the rest of our agenda. We'll move on to matters by board members, and I'll start with Mr. Schaefer to share any remarks that he has.
Thank you. I will be brief tonight. Last week was the SOA swing dance, and if you've never been, you missed something that is just fantastic. The Williamsburg Classic Swing Orchestra performed, and the SOA kids showed off their dancing skills. And it was just a great time last Thursday. Now, we've got band concerts this week. I would like to point out that Bruton becoming the Purple Star School once again was a great thing. And that, that, along with McGruder Elementary, and it's nice to see that all, all the schools in York County are Purple Star Schools. That's something to be proud of, really is. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pajovich.
Yes, I will be also brief. It's just been a short couple of weeks since the last meeting. Last week, I attended in Grafton High School choir concert, Christmas concert. And I would like to just extend my congratulations to Ms. Jarrett for her effort in developing course. I'm not sure for ground up, but like she done amazing job. There was eighty-five students on the stage, and they're, they're just sang beautifully. It was just a treat to listen to them. So thank her from bottom of my heart for being such a great teacher and putting our kids first. Also, just want to say thank you to all of the parents and everybody present here tonight for being here and supporting our students in our schools, our administrators and our teachers. This has been an amazing year, and would like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I wish every one of you guys the wealth, health, and prosperity in the new year. And I'm looking forward to the next year for all the challenges and successes we all gonna share together. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Richardson.
Yes. Thank you. So I'd just like to tell everybody, just remember what this, what's important during this holiday season, and to spend time with your family and your friends. And thank you to the families and staff and administrators of our division for everything they, they always do for us every day. And Merry Christmas to everyone and happy holidays. Thank you.
Ms. Fairman?
Hi, thank you, and I apologize for missing the November meetings due to illness. It's not fun if anybody's had it, what's going around. It definitely laid me up, and my voice is still not quite back. I also unfortunately missed the CAC, the Special Ed Advisory Committee meeting due to the illness beginning of this week, and we'll have info at, that at the next regular meeting. Some things to, to go over, I attended the SBMA Empower Ed Training last Thursday and Friday. Presenters included Virginia Secretary of Education Amy Gudera, several members of the Virginia Board of Education, and we had special guest speakers who gave informative talks and also took a lot of question answers. It was Governor Glenn Youngkin, Lieutenant Governor Winsome Sears, and Attorney General Jason Mieres. So that was great that they came out and they recognized the school board members who were in attendance and spoke with us about important items along those lines. I can go into more details, because I know it's getting to be a long, long evening. Also wanted to bring up again that I'm requesting that the York County and the, the school division employees who get free tuition for their students, if they live outside of York County, that it be listed as a benefit on their financial statements, because that's quite a chunk of change. And if anybody lives outside and wants to come into York County, they have to pay several thousand dollars in tuition. And I think it's only right that we recognize when it's given free to non-York County residents who are employees of the county or of the school division, that we at least acknowledge that that is an added benefit that not other employees get. And I think that will be it for now, because we're short on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that I wish everybody, the students, the staff, administrators, and teachers the happiest of holidays, whatever you're celebrating, just make sure to enjoy the time off. And, you know, just get some rest, recharge for the new year. I know these last couple of weeks, it's like the home stretch. In my line of work, this time of year, it's very busy. And I too am looking forward to December twentieth. So I just want everybody to, to just hang in there. It's, two weeks will go by fast, and it'll be here before you know it. And just to enjoy that time off. All right, and now to the really fun stuff. I'll ask Mr. Schaefer to discuss financial matters.
I'll be refunding.
Oh, consideration of approval of claim certified for payment significant expenditures for November. For instruction, totaled approximately $481,000. And the main cost there was for $99,800 for Children's Services Act to student tuition. Payments for technology-related items totaled $174,800, and the bulk of that was to CDW, $121,875 for securely classroom and email data archiving services. School nutrition expenditures totaled $955,120. And the bulk of that, of course, went to Sodexo for food service operations for $607,500. Payments related to construction and maintenance totaled approximately $815,125. And included, the big one was Simpson Unlimited, $343,250 for Bruton High School roof replacement. Payments for operations totaled $219,500, and included payments to Dominion Energy for $208,400. They were the big one there. Payments for transportation totaled $197,520, and the big one there was Kingmore Supply, $150,920 for 177 passenger bus, and for the installation of AC units on two buses. Payments for administration totaled $10,300 to versa for workman's comp claims. Okay. Significant changes related to the operating budget for November was state revenue increased 1.5 million in November fiscal year '25 when compared to fiscal year '24. Actual balance is off by about $3 million due to the timing in which state funds were received and posted to the finance system for November. Federal revenue is approximately 7.7 million less in fiscal year '25 due to expiration of one-time FSR stimulus grants. For expenditures, expenditures for instruction are approximately 2.8 million higher in November '25 than November '24 due to the increase, 5.5% increase in salaries, increase in health premiums, and additional physicians added in fiscal year '25. Significant changes related to the school nutrition budget. Federal revenue is 261,000 less in November this year compared to last year due to the timing in which our revenue was received, and there's no significant changes in expenditures for school nutrition. Resolution 24-2076 requires the board's approval authorizing procurement of more than $50,000. There are four items on a resolution totaling 5.14 million, the details of which can be viewed on board docs. Madam Chair, I now move to approve Financial Matters as listed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve Financial Matters as listed. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay. I'm just gonna briefly go over the consent calendar. I have an approval of personnel actions, approval of minutes from a work session on November 18th, 2024, and a regular meeting on November 25th, 2024. Approval of revisions to the student handbook and code of conduct. Approval of consent calendar as listed. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve Consent Calendar as Listed.
I'll second.
Are there any questions? Ms. Howard?
Excuse me, I just had one question. Was curious why there were so many substitute resignations, or am I not reading that correctly?
Cleaning them up.
I could ask Dr. Wrights to please come to the podium. I know there are, and Dr. Wrights, you can share this better than me, but I know there are certain times of the year where if are certain, if they review and substitutes haven't worked in a long period of time, and then we contact them, and then they come in batches. I think we've done that in the past.
So, this past August, we required all of our substitutes to take a training before they came onto our list so that they understood our policies of not putting hands on students and all of our expectations that we have placed in our classrooms. So, we actually went through all those lists, and if they had not attended those trainings, they no longer were placed on our substitute list moving forward as far as subbing in our classrooms. So, we reached out to them, and that's how a lot of them we were able to take off of our list because they did not do that required training.
Okay, thank you. How are we doing on the numbers for subs?
We're doing well on substitutes. We hire anywhere between five to eight a week. And then, of course, some of our substitutes who, we have a requirement of how much you have to work as a substitute. If you don't meet that requirement, then we no longer have you as a substitute. But we're doing well, and we seem to have a fairly good quota of meeting on a daily basis.
So, we're getting classroom coverage, all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Wrights.
Okay, Ms. Howard?
Was that Mr. Richardson or Mr. Schaefer on the second? Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the Consent Calendar as Listed. Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
We have that policy that we want to bring forward?
Yes. Dr. Carroll, thank you. So, Dr. Carroll, just as a review, we added this topic to the agenda. We have a few super minor adjustments to make to this policy in the hopes of clarifying it for our students, our parents, and our staff members. Dr. Carroll?
Yes, board members, thank you for adding this to the agenda. So, as our principals are working on implementation plans for the cellphone-free environment that we're gonna have in January, late last week, it became apparent that we had some either confusing language or didn't work with the way the high schools want to implement the policy on their campuses. And because what they want to do, and what has been proven to work at TAB High School, is that when students enter the doors in the morning, that's when the devices are put away. So, but the way, the definition for bell-to-bell reads, it says, the first sentence, "Bell-to-bell means from when the first bell rings at the start of the school day to begin instructional time until the dismissal bell rings." So, instructional time is a specific term that Dr. Skinner can elaborate on, how we track the Carnegie units and the time that we have in school, and that's what comes into play when we have snow days and that type of thing. So, the bells ring, or the doors open a bit earlier than that. So, the high schools would like to ring a bell when they open the building for students, and therefore have the students put their phones away. Therefore, staff is proposing that you strike four words out of that definition of bell-to-bell, and that is "to begin instructional time." Therefore, it would read, "When the first bell rings at the start of the school day until the dismissal bell rings," and then it continues. And so, we ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Well, Madam Chair, I'd just like to say one quick thing. It does make it simpler by removing those four words after reviewing that at the beginning of the meeting. And I can understand how it could become confusing during the day. While instructional time, does that mean during lunch period? Does that mean during this?
Right.
It just clarifies it even more. So, I'm willing to make a motion, and then we can have more discussion if there are any other questions or discussion on it. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the changes to the student cellphone policy by removing "to begin instructional time" from the definition of "bell-to-bell." That would be my motion.
I will second it.
All right. We have a first and a second. Ms. Howard?
Was there discussion anymore?
I'm sorry, I just... Is there any discussion before we move to vote? Thank you for catching me. Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to remove the phrase "to begin instructional time" from policy JFCF to clarify "bell-to-bell." Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
All right. We have no policy reading, first or second reading, so we will move on to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Shander?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Just a couple of things tonight, board members. One, I wanted to quickly review policy FFA, and the title is "School Names." So, if, I think a few of our citizens that presented on this this evening have already left, but I did want to share this for the record. So, the policy reads, and it's brief, "It is the responsibility of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, to determine the name of schools in the division. The school board will solicit and accept input from the public regarding school names, but reserves the right to make the final decision regarding the name of any school. Suggestions regarding the name of a school must be in writing, must state the name of the person or group making the suggestion, and must state the reasons supporting the suggestion. The school board may rename a school or school facility upon a determination that is appropriate to do so. The procedure for renaming a school or school facility will be the same as the procedure outlined above. No school shall be named after a person living or deceased." So, I wanted to make sure that I read that specifically related to the suggestions regarding the name of a school must be in writing piece. So, I think that's important for our community members to hear. The second item I wanted to talk about just really briefly to Ms. Fairman's request related to our employees who bring their children to our schools as a benefit. I can certainly look into that, but I will share with the board that I contacted every school on the peninsula, every school division on the peninsula, and every school division has the same process and practice that we do there. If you're an employee of the school division and you live outside the county or the city, you can bring your child to school tuition-free. I did want to share that there was some misinformation that was shared from the joint board meeting that we had with supervisors, and I explained this during the joint meeting. I either said 270 or 250, I cannot remember what the number was because I did not have those statistics with me. And I said, "Please don't quote me on that," but unfortunately, that information went out in a newsletter to many of our community members. So, what I will share is that we have around 250, is it students, Dr. Carroll, or staff?
252, 250 or...
Right. So, there's 252 total employees. Two of them are county employees, the rest of them are our employees. And I could share this in Friday notes with the board if they would prefer. 147 of those already have three-plus years. So, if you recall, many years ago, you had to work here for three years or pay tuition for your child. Once you worked three years, then you can bring your child to school tuition-free. And the board chose, based on our recommendation a few years ago, I can't remember the exact date, that we are in the largest national teacher shortage in the history of this country, and we need to do everything possible to attract staff members. So, currently, we only have, I'm sorry, we have 105 students who are under three years. I'm sorry, 105?
105.
Staff members or students?
Students.
So, we have 105 students who are here under the three-year mark. And it's also important to share that, as we shared in the work session this evening, you understand the dollar amount we receive from the state. I think, Mr. Bowen, you said $6,300? $6,500. So, when those numbers were communicated out to the community, it was 270 times 10, 10,000, which came up with a 2.7 number, which is not accurate. So, that number, because of how we're funded, we only get $6,300 per child. So, yes, it's 105, but I will tell you, being fully staffed, as the question was this evening around substitutes and every other position that we have, is one of the most important things that we can do. Attract and retain the best people to work in this school division, whether they work in the maintenance department, they're driving a bus, they're a teacher assistant, they're a teacher, they're a principal, whatever their role is, everybody contributes to our success. Our finance department that was here this evening receiving awards, if they live outside of our county and want to bring their child to our school, that is a fantastic benefit for us, for us as a division, working through. There are divisions that have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of vacancies for multiple positions. It will take a simple Google search to show you that. One of our divisions in our region lost 35 elementary teachers by the beginning of October, just this year. They lost 35 elementary teachers. So, having this in place is a good thing for this school division, in my opinion. It's a great thing for our staff members that we can attract them, and it provides a great experience for their children because we're here for our community, but we're also here for our employees, which is extremely important to remember. But I'll certainly check with our other school divisions to see if they if they have a process or practice, as Ms. Fairman suggested earlier. And last but not least, I just want to, I did want to recognize two gentlemen. Just really quickly, I have an email, oh, I had it pulled up. I'm sorry, give me one second. So, Darren Kirsch and Eric Mussowhite, they are leaders of the band and band programs over at Grafton High School. Their kids came in, presented at VSBA, they played Friday morning to breakfast. They were lights out, they were, they got a standing ovation from about 300 to 500 people who were there. They were simply amazing, and I just wanted to make sure that we recognize them this evening. We should all be really proud of all the programs that we offer, but the band program, they were quite amazing, so much so that multiple superintendents came up and were just blown away by our kids and by just the performance that they put on. So, I can't say enough about them. Other than that, I hope everyone has a wonderful and restful holiday season. I think everyone's ready for a break, but we still have a number of days to go, two and a half weeks, or however many days we have left. Looking forward to it. I think everyone, I thank everyone for their work, their dedication to our kids, and wish you a restful, restful, restful holiday. Thank you.
All right, we are now in need of a closed session. Can I please have a board member make a motion to take us into closed session?
I move that the York County School Board convene in closed session per section 2.2.37, 1181 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, consideration and discussion regarding prospective candidates for appointment to the Special Education Advisory Committee. As matters addressed in closed session are confidential, no minutes or recordings are permitted.
Second.
Ms. Howard? A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve the school board meeting in closed session as stated. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero, you are now in closed session.
Okay. Thank you for your participation and input this evening, and have a wonderful holiday season, and we will see you next year.